Will the meeting please come to order? Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, has been provided by a notice published in the Home News Tribune on December 28, 2018, and posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 5, 2019. At this point, I'd ask you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When you're ready, Lillian, roll call.
Mr. Geary.
Present.
Mr. Pitts.
Here.
Mr. Corret.
Present.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Here.
Mr. Soltes.
Here.
Mr. Pezy.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Danielle.
Here.
Mr. Reader and Mr. Singh are not present. Attorney Rubin.
Here.
Mr. Bignell.
Here.
Mr. Marley.
Here.
Are you serious?
It was just laying there.
Back in business.
We were going to share.
Acceptance of minutes, there are none. Onto resolutions. Now, this first one, we're going to ask our attorney, the extension of time for Shea's subdivision, P. 5162. Mr. Rubin?
Yes, this is a subdivision that was approved for final back on August 14, 2017. There's a letter from Stephen J. Tripp of the firm, of the Lulens firm, explaining that although the property is in Edison, it fronts on Woodland Avenue. On the other side of Woodland Avenue is South Plainfield. These sanitary sewer pipes are all on the South Plainfield side of Woodland Avenue, which means that they had to obtain approvals from two municipalities and two authorities before they can go to DEP to get a treatment works approval for the sewage system on this 13-lot subdivision. As a result of that, they've been delayed in beginning construction, and they've asked pursuant to Section 52A, which is a discretionary provision of the extension ordinance in the municipal land use law, for a one-year extension from April 14, 2019 to April 14, 2020. It's pretty perfunctory.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Pezy?
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the time. Requested?
Did we say that we're extending it to April 14 of 2020?
Yes.
So we're talking about a few months here.
Because you're protected from changes to the zoning ordinance for two years. So from, I'm sorry, it's August 14.
Right.
So from August 14, 2017 to August 14, 2019, they are statutorily protected. The statute then allows three one-year extensions, up to three one-year extensions. So they're asking for the first year, which will get you to August 14, 2020.
So amended.
Just one question. So you did the research on this, right? Remember, you said you were going to do the research on it, let us know whether or not we could?
Well, I didn't have any paperwork to support the rationale for it. And Mr. Tripp emailed me everything between last meeting and this meeting. I went through everything. And I have actually prepared a resolution in response to what I received, because I think the request is reasonable.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we make a motion to approve that?
Yes, first, we're going to make a motion to approve, and then we're going to adopt the resolution.
Right, that's what I'm saying today.
Yes.
I'll second the motion by Mr. Pezy.
Okay, Lillian.
Mr. Geary.
Yes, to approve?
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Soltes.
Yes.
Mr. Pezy.
Yes.
Mr. Singh.
Yes.
Mr. Danielle.
Yes.
So, councilor, do we need a motion now?
And I'm going to now distribute the resolution. Just hand it down if you would.
Sure.
Take a few minutes, just peruse it. There's going to be two more.
Two more.
[inaudible]
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 And then there's two different I T E restaurant categories that would be applicable to the area that was originally, I guess slated for Starbucks. And that comes out to 25. So that's where we get the 55 that Mr. Lehrer just mentioned a few minutes ago. And it doesn't take any credit for the possibility of people going to more than one space. They may park and go to the urgent care and then shop or go to get a bite to eat or whatever the restaurant may be. So we've taken each of the individual tenant spaces, applied the I T E ratio, and we come up with a maximum of 55 without any credit for shared trips between uses.
And the 10 spaces in the drive-through on top of the 63 spaces will remain, correct?
That is correct. So they're not counted as parking spaces, but they are moving parking positions and the design was for 10 spaces. So we had 63 plus the drive-through sort of got us to the 73 in the last application, but really was a parking variance for those 10 spaces.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Peasey.
I'd like to turn to Mr. Bignell. Hank, are you familiar with the changes in the I T E?
We don't go according to I T E, we go according to our ordinance. Ms. Dolan's trying to justify with new engineering statistics why the site will be operational with less parking. And if you concur with her, then you can move forward.
Okay.
All right? But she still needs a variance to what our ordinance says, okay?
Mr. Peasey, that's correct. Technically, we need a variance based upon your ordinance, but under the national standard, we come under the required.
And the variance was given for 10, and we're asking for another four based on Mr. Bignell's calculation of 77 required.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Hank, does our ordinance require, when you need a variance for certain spots, payment for certain additional parking if it is granted?
Yes, it does. You can pay for the parking space. It goes into the parking fund. I don't have the calculation off the top of my head of what it would cost, but yes, this is to your answer.
Okay, thank you.
When was our ordinance established? Do you know offhand, Hank?
Our land use ordinance?
Yes.
Oh, a while ago. It's been in place a long time.
How many, what'd you get, five, 10, 15 years ago?
I'd go at least 15 years, yeah.
And what was I T E's position 15 years ago or something? Do you know that?
Well, I don't know 15 years ago, but I did just do some comparisons within the last month. But we had the fifth edition released in 2019, and I can tell you, for example, 5 per thousand used to be pretty much the going ratio for retail and even for office. Medical office, sometimes a little bit higher. But everything's come down, not just in this most current version, but from the third edition to the fourth edition and now the fifth edition. And that's been within the last 10 years, definitely, those three editions.
Mr. Danielle?
So Hank, Hank, this thing's not working. What is the cost per parking spot for the parking?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's a few thousand dollars, I think, apiece, up to five spaces.
So we already gave, so we're only looking to give them four more spots?
That's right.
So it's just about money? So they either can pay that?
Yeah, whatever the fee is. I don't want to give you a number because I'm not exactly sure what the calculation is.
So, Mr. Lehrer, so if you pay for the four spots, then we still have to approve the variance, correct?
And that's what Ms. Dolan, Ms. Dolan's testimony's been.
Madam Chair, Hank, they have to pay for the previous ones, right, that they needed a variance for?
Now, you already granted those. They're only talking four now.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything to put in the record about the I T T? Or is there any documentation you're going to provide us? Not that I don't.
Well, I believe my report was submitted. It's the October 30, 2019. It's just a two-page report, but the second page provides the current I T E ratios for the different space that's proposed within the center or partially constructed, I guess, within the center. So we've provided the I T E parking ratios and then the parking demand for each of the different spaces. So it's 17 for the medical office, 13 for the retail, and a maximum of 25 for the restaurant space. And that gets you to 55.
It's 5,000 for each space for one to five spaces, shortage.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
$5,000 for each space for a shortage of one to five spaces. So if it's more than five, it goes down to 4,500 per space. That's section 37-60.1.
Yeah. Is this the new ordinance? I was just unaware of it.
This was adopted in 1999 and amended in 2012. The variance for the construction of less than the minimum number of parking spaces required under section 37-60.3 or any provision of the township zoning or land use regulations requiring a minimum number of parking spaces shall require payment as follows.
Okay. I can't argue with your ordinance, so the four spaces would equal?
$20,000.
I can't do anything about it, is your ordinance.
So, Madam Chair, other questions? So you said the market conditions, meaning that we originally gave you an approval for one medical professional, which was one doctor and?
Right. We actually, at the time, we did have one medical doctor who had signed a letter of intent but changed his mind, and now we're finding that the medical uses are getting smaller. They want less space.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Bignell.
This is from T R C. The reason why we didn't point out the fee in the report is because I believe, Jeff, you had talked about lessening the parking for the restaurant and making that a condition of approval.
Technically, technically, we don't need any variance, but we agreed with Mr. Bignell's report. Just so you know, the restaurant use is actually, the number of seats inside the restaurant has gone down from, Betsy, maybe you can talk about that, but technically, we're even. But now that we're talking, we thought that we would just take the variance, but if they're $5,000 per spot, it's a lot of money. Maybe you wanted to just mention it.
Sure. The prior restaurant had 26 seats, and that's the number on Mr. Bignell's item three on page two of his letter. So the 26 seats originally envisioned in the restaurant space would have required nine parking spaces. The current restaurant use only is looking to have 15 seats, which is five. So we come to the difference of four spaces, which was the number that we thought we'd just ask for the additional variance.
It's basically a wash.
So it's a wash.
And I would suggest that if the board accepts that, which I have no problem with, just make it a condition of approval that you can't add the seats back into the restaurant unless you come back to the board and pay the vig.
Okay.
All right? So that makes it fair on both ends and?
So how do we, where do we get the testimony to support the fact that?
Well, I just gave it to you, so, I mean, I?
But you don't own, you don't represent the restaurant.
The whole property.
But the whole property?
Correct.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasey.
Mr. Lehrer, would your, would the applicant be agreeable to that condition of approval?
My client said that just because he doesn't have a signed, fully signed letter of intent, he'd rather just pay for those spaces. So he would agree to pay for those four spaces. Very likely, he won't need them, but if, in case that tenant backs out, we'll just pay for the spaces.
You got singles out there?
Yes, I think at this point, I don't see any other comments from the board. Mr. Lehrer?
Nothing further, yes.
Open to the public. If there's someone that would like to speak as to this application, please come forward, your name and address.
Seeing none?
No.
Michael Loff, Nine Stone Road, Edison.
Just make sure the court reporter?
Can you?
I live at Nine Stone, adjacent to the bank. Right now, they've built in that place.
Do you, I gotta swear you in, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, now, please state your name and spell it for the record, please.
Michael Loff, L O F F T, Nine, Stony Road, Edison, New Jersey.
You can proceed.
Right now, I can't park in front of my house. Milano Construction Trucks block those. You approve what happens when they added another, if there's no parking there, they park on there. If you go to the other end of 27, where Dr. Dominic is, the apartments flow out there because there's no parking. Parking is a premium, and you're going to turn around and we're going to get screwed again because when we did the bank, you said four spaces in front of the travel lanes would be for employees because of a traffic signal. Employees never parked there. They parked on the side. That's one problem. Now you want us to turn around and short this again. We don't have the tent for the restaurant. We don't know how many seats are going to be in the restaurant. Again, they're saying 15 is going to be 26. They'll end up third. We're going to get screwed on this. We really are going to get screwed. He wants to buy my house, tell him to come see me, I'll sell him the parking spaces.
Mr. Lehrer, did you have a response?
I have nothing to say. I will instruct my client to be, make sure that the contractors, workmen, just don't use Stony Road and that they keep onto the property. I really apologize for that. I apologize to Mr. Loffa for that, and we'll make every effort to not make that happen in the future.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Seeing no one come forward, make motion, we close public portion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion based on the presentation of our expert witness in terms of the needs of parking and what is existing, plus the willingness of the applicant to pay for the additional four spaces that he's requesting, plus the fact that the applicant has agreed to work with the owner to make sure the construction vehicles are off the side street. I'm not sure how we could enforce that, but that would be very important for the neighbors in the area. On that basis, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, include this amended P 6, 2016, to include the requested variance for four additional parking spaces on the basis that the applicant will pay for the $5,000 per space to the fund and also that, with the following conditions. One, that the adherence and acceptance of all the recommendations as outlined in Mr. Bignell's latest update on December 6, 2019. And finally, adding that there can be no changes to these conditions of approval without returning to this board to seek our approval of any such changes.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I'd second the motion.
Okay, Lillian?
Mr. Geary?
Yes?
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Solpes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasey?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Yes.
This application is approved.
Thank you for accommodating me tonight. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Mr. Sandelsky, what, I mean, since you're a councilperson, what can that, I just saw the picture, Don, of the house. It's a nice house. What can you do?
Parking on the side street you're talking about?
Well, parking's different than trucks park, construction trucks.
We can police, but we could also let our zoning officer go out there and look at this. So I think that's something we need to do.
Right.
And I'll make sure that that gets done.
Yeah, thank you. That makes me feel. These issues will be addressed. Okay, on to, back to number one on our agenda, under new business, P 24-2019, Hilltop Associates, Dayton Drive, block 643, lots 20 and 20.G. Also, block 643.DD, lots 20.K and 20.H.2.
Hello. Good evening. I just want to make a correction. The lot, the block and lots are lots 20.F, 20.G.1, 20.G.2 in block 643.DD only.
That is a big, okay.
Say that again.
So the application is for lots 20.F, 20.G.1, and 20.G.2 in block 643.DD. So, good evening, Amanda Curley from the law firm of Willens, Goldman &amp; Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant, Hilltop Associates. Tonight, we are here seeking an approval to implement a roadway beautification plan along Dayton Drive, located on lots 20.F, 20.G.1, and 20.G.2 in block 643.DD. Dayton Drive is a private road off of Oak Tree Road that provides access into the Hilltop Manor development. Dayton Drive is private and will remain private. This application is part of ongoing efforts to upgrade Hilltop Manor and meetings with council members. In fact, we were here two years ago to do some upgrades to the county intersection with Oak Tree Road. Those will remain unchanged. We're not proposing to change those at all. And some other improvements that we've been doing include some landscaping, adding passive recreation space, and upgrading the interior of units once they become vacant. So as stated, this application is simply to implement a roadway beautification plan to enhance the overall safety function and appearance of Dayton Drive. In that regard, the applicant is proposing to mill and resurface Dayton Drive, widen the cart width to 31 feet to allow for two travel lanes and a designated parking lane. They're going to stripe 48 spaces that are already existing on Dayton Drive in the designated parking lane, add 16 more parking spaces in the associated lots off of Dayton Drive, add a seven-foot island, and then add some landscaping and trees to help with beautification. So for tonight, I have Greg Plousas, a professional engineer, on behalf of the applicant, and he is with CPL Partnership to testify in support of this application, and I note that there are no variances or waivers sought. And if that's okay, I would like to start over there.
Can I just ask a question so we can put it on the record?
Yeah.
Dayton Drive is a private road?
It's a private road.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, please state your name and spell it for the record.
Gregory Plousas, P L O U S S A S.
Mr. Plousas, can you please start with your background and qualifications?
Yes, I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Newark College of Engineering, now in J I T. I've also done postgraduate work at Penn State in the areas of hydraulics and soil mechanics. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania, as well as a licensed professional planner in New Jersey.
Have you testified before this board?
Yes, but not in recent years.
And other areas? Have you testified here in the zoning board or just?
Planning board.
Just the planning board?
I've appeared over 100 other municipalities, an expert witness for engineering. I've also been accepted by the Superior Court of New Jersey as an expert witness.
We will also accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
Was the site plan prepared under your direction?
Yes.
And can you please describe the site and the area around the site?
I have a Google aerial here that we'll use. Basically?
We mark that as A1, please.
On the Google area, sort of in the center, you'll see Dayton Drive. It's colored in cream. It intersects Oak Tree Road to the north. To the south, there's an existing wooded area. To the west, there's the apartment complex itself, Hilltop Gardens. And to the east, there's an existing industrial complex. As our attorney said, the proposal is to resurface, revitalize the area. Basically, they're looking to beautify the area.
He's marking this A2.
This is the largest scale aerial of the area. You can see Oak Tree Road over to the left here, the open wooded area to the right. Dayton Drive is approximately 2,100 feet, and as already stated, it's a private road, and the intention is to keep it a private road. Basically, the improvements, as our attorney has testified, is we'll be adding two lanes, two 12-foot lanes, one in each direction, plus a seven-foot parking aisle. Also, we'll be improving the intersection of Oak Tree Road per an approval that they've received from the county previously. So our plans at the intersection of Oak Tree Road into the first driveway mirror the plans that have been approved by the county for that intersection.
And can you?
We will be adding 64 parking spaces. Forty-eight of them will be along Dayton Drive itself. Currently, there is parking along Dayton Drive, but it's not striped or anything, so it becomes a little bit of a safety concern and some confusion. In addition to the 48 spaces there, we'll be adding 16 spaces within the parking lot on the other side. There is a fire hydrant at the intersection of Oak Tree Road, about 50 feet off, which is just behind the curb. We'll be widening the road there, so that hydrant will have to be relocated behind the new curb. We're not proposing any new additional lighting or signage. We believe the, it's not necessary for the type of improvement that we're proposing. We're not affecting the storm drainage in the area at all, nor the sanitary, nor the water facilities. There'll be no increase in impervious coverage. Again, we're just trying to improve the roadway to make it safer for the residents. We do have, I do have copies of reports from D N R, Mr. Curley, dated December 13, 2019. We have no problem with complying with the requirements that Mr. Curley has provided us with, and we also have a report from Mr. Bignell dated September 20, 2019. And I think we've covered most of the stuff in that letter.
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
Yeah, we have another report dated December 9. And Mr. Plousas is correct, you've covered all the items that I had in my, in my report.
The color rendering of the proposed improvement that they're going to be adding, so they're looking at landscaping from north to south in the form of approximately 60 shade trees and 465 shrubs. We believe once this is implemented, it'll be a significant improvement in the area and make it safer for the residents. In addition, as requested by Mr. Bignell, we have shown the necessary sightline easements to make sure that there's adequate sight distance.
And just for the record, I marked that exhibit as A3.
Any comments or questions? I think at this point, then, I would open to the public?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pipola?
I'm sorry. We have a, an issue which I think can be addressed, but we have a letter from our fire department indicating that the drawings, submitted plans, the divisions show no fire apparatus turning radius for SU 47. I think that would have to be, certainly if the board considers it, that will have to be a requirement or an add-on for it.
Well, we're not changing the geometry out there at all, and we're not talking about going into the complex, but we can put the turning templates on the plan to make sure they work.
Do you have a copy of the letter?
Yes.
I do. We can make that a condition.
Okay. All right, I think at this point, then, I will open to the public. Anyone that would like to speak as to this application, please come forward, your name and address for the court reporter.
Having seen no one come forward, I'd like to make a motion, we close public portion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
J P did the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, preliminary final approval of this application, based on the following conditions. One, as we had indicated, that the drawings be adjusted or edited to show the necessary fire, the turning radius for the fire department. Also, that, as the applicant has stated, that he agrees and accepts all the conditions from Mr. Bignell's December 9 letter and Mr. Curley's December 13 letter of conditions. With the first, the adherence to all these requests, plus finally, adding a proviso that if there are any future changes to this application, that we need, you need to come back before this board to request approval.
Great, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Corret did the second.
Mr. Geary?
Yes, to approve?
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Member Sandelsky?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Solpes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasey? Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Thank you.
Okay, number two on the agenda, P 27-2019, federal business, 1099 to 1105, King George's Post Road, block 390.A, lot 1.03.
Steve, do you want to switch to go to the second?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Oh, okay. Should I read into the record, then?
Yes, just do the second one and then this one.
Okay, so we're actually in number, right, we're actually in number three on the agenda. It's P 28-2019, federal business. Everything's the same except for the block and lot. The block's the same, the lot is 1.02. And again, this is number three on the agenda. And I'll just clarify that we're hearing P 28-2019.
Good evening, Stephen Tripp from the firm of Valens Goldman &amp; Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant. We have two cases on tonight. These are the two lots that this board granted subdivision approval for earlier this year. Previously was lot 1A4. Both lots are within the Woodbridge Avenue redevelopment plan and are subject to the redevelopment plan area and are subject to the redevelopment plan. This lot is the larger of the two. It's 25.82 acres. The other one that was scheduled on the agenda as well, that we'll cover after this, is the smaller lot, which is lot 1.03. Essentially, what we're proposing is a 465,000 square foot building, mostly warehouse space with some ancillary offices. The site plan meets all the requirements of the redevelopment plan with only one minor exception. The freestanding monument signs are set back 10 feet from King George's Post Road, and the redevelopment plan requires 15 feet, so we need a deviation. And as the engineers will explain, it's enhanced visibility for the motoring public, for trucks, in terms of putting that a little bit closer to the right-of-way. The other thing that you'll hear when the engineer goes through the plan is, in terms of the woodland management plan, the adjacent property is really too small to accommodate the required replacement trees. So you'll hear that in connection with the other application, but rather than pay into a tree fund, what we're proposing to do is plant the trees that are short from the other site on this site. So it's right there, because these were originally part of a single lot, so we'll improve the overall area with the plantings. So as the engineer will explain, we have excess trees on this site to make up for what you'll hear was a shortfall on the property next door. And with that, I'd like to introduce the engineer.
Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Lisa A. DiGeralamo, DI, capital G, E, R, O, L, A, M, O.
Mr. Tripp? Mr. Tripp, I just have one comment. Mr. Tripp gets paid by the billable hour like I do, and I don't know whether you get paid by the paper, but I just, in this modern era of trying to save paper and save your clients some money, couldn't we get those like eight and a half by 11? What do they call them? I just, it's. I know Mr. Vashelia wants to retire, so I want to make sure, you know, we can cut back on the paper. No, we all read this stuff, as you can see. I mean, I select the stuff home.
Does your ordinance permit reduced size? I'm not sure it does. I think the checklist may require.
Maybe not for our professionals, but for the planning board.
For the, we always, we always ask for 11 by 17.
Yeah, just to save you the, you know, again, it just seems like a lot of money to be spent on this paper. And in this day and age, everybody's talking about, you know, not killing too many trees. I get a lecture every day from my secretary, but I just bring it up. It's not, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm sure we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, not for, not for, not for upstairs, for the engineers, but for the planning board, it just seems like a waste of money to be spending it to give us, we read the stuff, and to have that whole of paper, and if you got color, that's even better, but fine.
My clients and my professionals would probably have no, no question, I mean, I don't think anybody would have any issue with providing that instead, but I think the policy would have to come from the board.
No.
If that's what you want, I'm sure people would supply it.
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you, the ordinance says that it has to be a large-sized submission, so we can all read the plan, but I think what Mr. Danielle's talking about is supplying smaller versions for them at the board at the hearing night, so they can just see it in front of them. But you still have to comply with the checklist item, which says the number of paper copies of a certain size.
Or you need 14 full-size.
Yes, so we still need that. You can give them some smaller ones that they can read at the board hearing. And that's what all the developers have been doing. It has nothing to do with submission. It's just, you know, a courtesy to the board.
Okay. Mr. DiGeralamo, can you just briefly review your background qualifications?
I have a bachelor's degree in engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology. I have an MBA from Montclair University. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, the state of New York. I have over 30 years' experience in engineering and infrastructure projects. I've testified before dozens of boards in the state of New Jersey, including this one.
You've testified before the planning board?
Yes.
We'll accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see you have an aerial that you put up. Did you mark that as exhibit A1?
Yes, A1.
And can you just generally orient the board to the site and explain a little bit about the current site conditions?
So we do have an aerial here of the site. North is pointing up, just to give everybody some general idea of where we are. We have King George's Post Road kind of in the center bottom of the drawing, running left to right. Above the site, we have Woodbridge Avenue. We have the New Jersey Turnpike, one of the tolls at the New Jersey Turnpike, and Route 40. So the site is generally bounded by those roadways to the, to the north, and then to the south and to the west, it's bounded by the rest of Raritan Center with all of those facilities. To the east is that vacant parcel that Mr. Tripp spoke about earlier, which was the piece that was part of the subdivision that was previously approved. So we have lot 1.02 and lot 1.03 next to it. The site is in the Woodbridge area redevelopment area, and it's about 25.8 acres.
And do you have a rendered site plan?
Yes, if I can just move to the proposed. So just zooming in on the.
A2.
A2.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, moving closer into our proposal, we are proposing a office warehouse of 465,033 square feet. 430,156 is proposed as warehouse. 34,877 is proposed as office. It is a one-story building. We are also proposing the car parking in the front of the building, and there's 301 parking stalls proposed there. We have 95 loading docks in the rear of the building, and then we have 104 trailer parking stalls in the rear. That trailer parking would be used for, to complement the uses within the building. There are four points of access to King George's Post Road. All the way on the west side, we have an access to the rear loading area, and all the way on the east side, same thing, access to that loading area, and both of those drives are 30 feet. Then we have two access points to the car parking in the front of the building, and those would be 24-foot wide roadways. There are several walls and fences on the property. The property does have some significant relief coming from Woodbridge Ave down to King George's Post Road, so there are some walls in the rear of the site. And at the top of those walls, we have several fences. We have chain-link fence along the northern portion, and we have a vinyl panel fence along the west side, and a portion of decorative aluminum fence, which is the more visible part. So those walls and fences are along the western and the northern side of the property. From the perspective of utilities, we do have sewer and water, which will be connected in King George's Post Road on the eastern side of the site. The gas service will be connected on the western side of the site, and the telephone electric cable will all come from a pole, again, on the eastern part of the site. There is a gas pipeline in King George's Post Road, and that's the pipeline that serves all the buildings. All the connections to the adjacent buildings come from that line, as well as that's the line we're going to take our service from as well.
Now, there's two-inch, four-inch, and six-inch lines, correct?
Correct.
And that's per letter you got from Elizabeth?
We received a letter from Elizabeth Town.
So that's not a major transmission line, it's simply a line that services this part of the industrial park, correct?
Correct, correct. That's, that's where we'll be taking our service from, and that's where our neighbors are taking their service from.
But they did identify it as a high-pressure line, so I think technically we need relief from the ordinance, but I would defer to Hank on that. Yeah, what I said was, it's, they defined it as a Elizabeth Town. They said it's a high-pressure line, but it's a main that services the buildings on that road. They all connect into that main, it's not a transmission line.
We, we had to get the letter from them saying that there's no high-pressure lines within 75 feet of where you're digging.
They issued a letter and said that there is a high-pressure main in the road.
Okay.
That will service this site that we're actually going to tie into.
Are you within 75 feet of digging near it?
We probably are, because it's in the middle of King George's.
Yeah, so.
But it's a main, it's not a transmission.
And that's the reason why the ordinance is in place. If you're going to dig within the 75 feet, the board has to give you relief.
And that's what.
And you have to explain to them you're not going to blow the place up. That's why, that's why they do it, you know?
Well, it's the same line that anybody who wanted to build on King George's Post Road would have to deal with. It's the line, without that line, there'd be no gas.
And I would, I would just tell the board that that may be the case, but you may want to just have a little extra language, and you're saying that the, the gas company's around when you're doing some excavation, just so they're satisfied, and that would be part of the testimony, so that there isn't any problems in the future.
Yeah, we'll notify, we can notify the gas company. I think your ordinance requires notification anyway, as part of your pre-construction. So, but looking at this plan, this doesn't propose any risk beyond normal construction, is that correct?
Correct, it's, yeah, it would be standard. Most streets have a gas main in them, and we have to connect to them.
Most, most gas mains aren't at high-pressure. Okay, this one is.
Okay.
That's the difference. So the ordinance says if you're going to dig within 75 feet of a high-pressure main, which we're going to do, that you need to get relief for the board has, or the power company needs to go out there and say, hey, look, you stay away from me, or we're watching, or everybody's satisfied, so we don't blow anything up. Because that's what's happened in the past, and that's why the ordinance is in place.
Yeah, we understand.
I don't think you have a problem either digging.
And that's why we're.
But it still makes everybody aware of the fact that you are out there digging. Okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, counsel?
How far is the main off the proposed curb?
The, the gas company would not give us an exact location in the street.
Right.
From the initial letter that we, we sent to them. So it, it is in the street, but the exact location from the curb, we don't know at this time. Obviously, we'd get that determined before, before construction started.
Okay. And Mr. Bignell, isn't it typically too, when you do have a high-pressure main like that, that the company is out there while you're doing any excavation or anything like that? They're out there, they locate everything, they show you where it is, and they're.
That's if you treat it as a high-pressure main. If you treat it as just a transmission line in the street, you don't.
We have to.
But we're, this, I, you have to treat a little bit, a little more caution here, only because you don't want any, any issues that we've had in the past. That's why the ordinance is in place.
Right, right. I agree with you.
I had a question. When you say treat, what, what does that mean?
Well, I mean, an extra level of precaution. You get ahold of a power company, maybe a condition of approval is that when they do start to dig, that's all marked out for them, and they may have a representative from the company out there just to make sure everybody's satisfied, and then they can go on and do their merry thing.
Okay.
All right, it just, it gives them a heads up, it gives them a heads up, okay?
We obviously would have no problem, as a condition of the approval, to agree to coordinate with the gas company.
Correct.
To, for them to field-locate. We're not doing any improvements in King George's Post Road, but the work, the curb cuts, probably will be within 75 feet, because that's, you know, the, the main is somewhere within the right-of-way. Moving along to refuges, there was a question in the report just as to how refuse and recycling's going to be handled. Can you address that?
Typically, FBC requires their tenants to have a contract with a private hauler to deal with the, with the refuges. And typically, what'll happen is there'll be a compactor in one of the loading docks. That's the best way to treat the, the refuges, is right there. It's convenient and it's easier to control by placing it in that loading dock.
And Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have absolutely no problem with that, just as long as it, it's somewhere along the way, there's not, they're not allowed to start bringing dumpsters and plopping them in the back of the building, and that's what happens around town, so if that could be a condition of approval, I would be satisfied with that.
There's no, the compactor obviates the need for dumpster, because the trash is put directly in the compactor, and then the hauler comes and takes it away.
Is it going to be one, one operator, or are we going to break the building into a couple, or?
If there's multi-tenants, each tenant would have, would have to arrange for their own service.
Well, now you're making, so then they arrange their own service, and they drop a dumpster behind their portion of the building, and that's what I'm trying to avoid.
No, we require compactors, so we don't have to deal with that. So tenants will have their own compactor.
Okay, well, then the board has to make, make allowance that maybe a future compactor or two might be added to the site plan, just so you guys are aware of that.
Yeah, they'd be located in the, in the loading dock area.
Yeah, the loading dock area here, right adjacent to the building.
Danielle?
So right now, we have one compactor?
The, the number of compactors will depend on the number of tenants.
Number of tenants. Yeah, it's not shown on the plan.
So if we said the, the number of, number of compactors will equal the number of tenants, one for one?
Correct.
As a condition or something, okay.
I don't think, I think for a distribution center like that, as long as what they're saying, and that is standard practice, to put a, a compactor at one of the door sites, and that compactor has a, has a bin there, and that when the bin is loaded, they call the guy to pull the bin out. Now, if a tenant happens to be somebody who generates a lot of refuge, maybe, he may have two or three compactors there. So I don't think we could put, I don't think it's wise for us to put a restriction on the number of compactors per tenant, or something of that nature. But I think the issue is a compactor, as opposed to using the back of the area with open dumpsters to do.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting, I want to do a clarification, and I'd like to have Mr. Vashelia sworn in to explain a little bit more about how it's handled.
Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record. He needs a microphone.
First name Peter, last name Vashelia, V is in Victor, I S C E G L I A.
Mr. Vashelia, just briefly, you are the principal of the applicant, is that correct?
I, I am.
And you're a part of the data management of the Raritan Center, is that correct?
It's correct.
So you're familiar with all practices of how trash is handled on all of your sites?
Yes, I am.
And can you clarify to, how, how the trash is handled? So there could be compactors, but additionally, there could be other methods as well?
Yes. I, I, I thought it would be helpful to just share the common practices in Raritan Center with the board, which is what I would expect for this building. The building proposed is 465,000 feet. We've incorporated multiple entrances. I think there is the possibility that there could be as many as four customers. Our, our hope would be that there would be ideally one or two, but it could be, the building does present the flexibility to have as many as four. Each customer, if there were multiple customers, would handle their own trash individually. The common practice, Raritan Center has about 350 to 400 customers. Some do use compactors, but that is the, I would say it is the exception. The use is very light. Most people do use dumpsters. They are placed immediately behind a loading door. We require them to be covered. The lease requires the dumpsters to be covered and that all trash be within tied bags, but that, that is the common practice, and, and that's what the customers do, and it, it works very well in this case. You know, all the loading docks. In this case, you know, all the loading docks are to the rear, so there are no visible issues, which is, you know, similar to most of the buildings in Raritan Center. The trash is hidden from view, as it would be in this case. There is a requirement that all the dumpsters be green, so they are uniform in color. There is no graffiti, there is no, there's not a collage of color. So, I mean, we're very conscious of the aesthetics and the visuals associated with it, but I didn't want to give the board the impression that compactors are the common practice. They're not the common practice.
And I think Mr. Bignell had a comment?
So I guess the testimony is that no dumpster will be parked out behind the building at any time?
Mr. Bignell, the dumpster would be, the dumpster would be immediately adjacent to a loading dock. In other words, what the customers do is they open the loading dock door, and they, and they put the trash in the dumpster.
That goes against the re-screening of a dumpster, so that's where we're at. That's what we're trying to avoid. So some dumpster locations, some screening, maybe build them into the, into the, and do them as future. If you need them, build them into the loading dock area with some fencing or whatever, so that the back of the building doesn't have dumpsters, you know, neatly aligned along the walls. Because sometimes they, the trash guy just leaves it cockeyed, or whatever the case may be, and then we're stuck with it. So that's what we're trying to avoid here. So I think an easy solution would be to allow him to build a dumpster or screened area behind four spots in the future. You don't need to put them there today if you don't need them, but in the future, that they have to be a screened dumpster location. That's our ordinance. So not having a dumpster neatly against the wall, that doesn't do it.
I think we'd be comfortable if the, if the dumpster's right against the loading dock door. I think we could build a screened enclosure. That would be fine, as long as it would be directly adjacent to the building.
And that's fine, no problem with that at all.
We can do that, we can do that.
Councilman?
Yeah. Mr. Bignell, let's assume there's one tenant for the building. So if we find a spot for one...
Well, he has a compactor then, right? I guess if it's one big user, you have the compactor.
Some, some do use a compactor, Mr. Bignell, but even if it was one large tenant, they probably have multiple dumpsters. The compactors are, are used, but they're rare, it's rarely used.
As long as it's screened, I don't care whether it's a compactor or a dumpster, whatever.
All I'm saying, what I'm getting at, is we have a location and a screen location for one, and then if there's two tenants, will them...
Yeah, he could put it by the doors, closest to where that tenant is.
Have another one.
Yeah, that's right. And that should be a condition of approval, so if he's adding that in the future, everybody in town hall knows exactly what he has to do.
And if there's four tenants, you need four.
He has plenty of loading by the ordinance, so he's got enough loading docks to do that.
But I'm saying it's fair, assuming, hopefully, there's one tenant there, and you just have one, and you install one, and then...
I'm fine with that, just as long as it's screened, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
Okay?
No, I'm good with that, too.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, perfectly fine, yeah. Thank you, thank you very much.
The lighting for the project will be a combination of poles, single head, double head, and wall-mounted lighting in the rear of the loading, loading area along the building, and then again in the front, and along each of the driveways. The lighting will meet the Point Two criteria of the ordinance. Stormwater management will be guided by NJDEP and the township ordinance. The project is a major development and will require us to meet the quantity, quality, and groundwater recharge requirements. The proposed system for the site includes four underground detention systems. Two of them will be in the rear, and two of them will be in the front. It's a series of 42 inches, 42-inch pipes. Two of them will be for the roof drain, two of them will be for the parking areas, and then we'll have mechanical treatment devices at the end of those systems to provide the water quality for the site. Signs, signs?
In terms of signage, you heard what I introduced, we have four monument signs proposed at each one of each entrance, is that correct?
We have four, four signs proposed, one at the western entrance, two at the central driveway entrance, and one at the eastern entrance. The signs are 42 square feet. They stand about eight foot, nine inches off the ground, and about six point, six and a half feet in width. We are proposing to shift those signs a little bit closer to the road than permitted by ordinance, since 15 feet is required. We'd like to move that forward about five feet, just to improve the visibility along the road, and give people a better, a better eyesight to, to those signs. One other thing I would note is the plans are showing that the signs are to be lit. We, we do not want to light them, so we will be revising the plans to remove the lights on the signs.
And other than the setback in 10 feet, the signs fully comply with the requirements for redevelopment, correct?
Correct.
And in terms of facade signs, none are proposed at this time, is that correct?
We are not proposing any facade signs at this time.
If a sign was proposed, ultimately, it would comply with the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
In terms of the landscape and the woodlands management, did you prepare a specific for this evening, which shows modifications, city woodlands management, when it's submitted, on the occasion?
Yes, we did.
So what we're proposing is slightly different than what we're, what we're done, done set in the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And can you explain how that's...
Do you want me to mark it A3? Yes? No, or yes? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Yes? Okay, the, the plan in front of you is a minor modification to the plan that's, that was submitted. We did, we did identify a point in the, in the plan that was not applicable to this particular development, because we had more than 10% wooded area. The impervious tree requirement was not required. So this plan shows that reduction. It was actually 115 trees that would be reduced here from what was previously proposed. So before, we had 418, so now deducting that 115 that was required for that impervious calculation that we no longer applies because of the 10% wooded area. So now we're come down to 303 trees that are required. So that's what's shown on this exhibit. And Mr. Bignell, we did forward a copy of that to you. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but we did, okay. So there's 303 trees required for this particular plan. We are proposing, I'm going to make sure I get the number right, 476 trees is what's proposed, which is 173 trees more than we need. And those trees are intended to fulfill the tree requirement for the adjacent lot, which, which we'll be talking about next.
And when you say 476 trees, there's actually those are tree credits, the trees are large enough that that counts for more than one tree.
Right. Some of them, some of them are just one tree for one tree, but there's 74 tree, shade trees that count for more than a single tree. So it's, the 476 is really the tree equivalent, not the actual number of plantings.
Madam Chair, I have one question.
Yes?
Can you give us the exact amount of, of, of tree coverage, like less, you said less than 10%?
11.3, more than 10%. It's 11.3.
So you have that on the plan?
Yes.
That's a note saying it's 11.3 existing today?
Exactly.
Okay, good.
Yes, it is.
That would be on the revised plan.
It's, it's, it's bullet number one under the calculation.
When we submit a revised plan set, that would be on, it was not on the plan that originally been submitted and discussed at TRC, and you make a decision to handle it as an exhibit, and then a condition, the approval being the proposed revised plan is correct.
Right, so the caliper's bigger on these, some of those trees?
Well, there's 74 trees that are 4-inch caliper.
Right.
That counts three for one.
Right.
So that counts for 222, and then the remaining trees, there's another 254. So the total of trees is 328, correct?
Right, correct.
So we get credit for 76 because of that?
Right, okay.
Councilman?
Yeah. Did I hear you say, I know there's another application coming, so are you going to credit some of these trees towards that application? Is that what you said, or...
Exactly, exactly.
173 of them.
173 of them.
Okay, 173 of those 476 are going to be credited.
To the adjacent application, right.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
And when we have the, actually, you testified on that application, they'll explain to you.
Okay.
That we're providing trees that are required on that site that were 173 short, because they don't fit. So that's why we're...
You're getting that credit, okay.
Yep, and we're cleaning here. And we just ask the board in this application to recognize that, and in the next application.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
In terms of the reports, we've reviewed the reports. We don't really have any issues with anything else, like that. And the reports...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Pipola?
I want to ask a question. You're requesting a variance for the sign position. Your testimony, I'm interpreting your testimony, it's not because you have a line of site problems with cars going out. I think you, I thought you suggested, suggested that you thought it would be better seen if it was five foot closer to the road than five feet back.
Correct, correct.
How do you, how'd you determine that?
It, it moves it closer to, to the edge of the road, so that it just, it just improves the visibility of it. It's, it's not a site distance issue, or a site triangle issue, or anything like that. It's just, as you move it closer, you, you have a visibility from it a little bit further away. So it's giving you a little bit more notice as you get there.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasy?
Mr. Bignell, this is in the Woodbridge Avenue redevelopment area.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other applications, any other buildings that are going in this?
The next one.
Is that the only ones? So if we made the ordinance 10 feet, because it is a redevelopment, we do anything we want.
Well, you've already made the, you've already done the ordinance that says 15 feet, so you'll be granting a variance now, because that zoning is in place. But personally, I have no, no objection to them being at 10 feet as opposed to 15 feet.
Right.
Because she, it does give them a little more time to see the sign. And these are not overpowering signs. These are, you know, very tastefully done.
I was only trying to accommodate the...
Yeah. Well, you don't want, that's another whole level of, or something else, you know, to change the ordinance. You don't want to do that.
Okay.
And the redevelopment plan gives you, gives you the right to give them a variance to it.
Exactly.
Okay.
The redevelopment plan allows for deviations based on flexible C, and what we're basically saying is that...
Yes.
...the 10 feet is an improvement over, over setting it back for, it just allows trucks and vehicles coming to the road, that will give better visibility.
Makes sense.
Because these signs are all at the entrance. There are each, right, clear?
Yes.
And seeing no other questions, I think at this point, we'll open to the public, or Mr. Pipola?
Well, the...
You're not finished?
Oh, you're not finished with your case?
We have the architect, show the architectural plan, because the board has interest. Also, we've gone through the reports.
I'm not seeing any comments.
Well, I think, I think one, as far as going through the reports, you're, you're committing to adhering to both of our consulting engineers.
We went through them at TRC, I think we addressed most of the reports that presented us with...
You've touched all, all my comments, I just went through them.
Mr. Corley, any comments from your report?
Yeah, we went over this at TRC. I amended my report in a minor fashion to reflect the redevelopment plan. I scratched item 2.3. The rest of the report still stands. It's pretty straightforward commentary, and as the applicant testified, they'll, they'll touch on all the bases that I asked them to touch. So it's pretty straightforward.
The architect, the architect is here, the board is interested, we submitted a plan, there aren't any questions on the architect, or can you move on?
I don't think there's any.
I have none.
No, no other...
I have a question for Mr. Bignell.
Oh, Mr. Danielle?
Not on the plans. So these fees that are being listed in here, is this, we're just trying to confirm this with the applicant, that's why they're in there now?
Well, every time that the applicant revises their plan, the ordinance requires revised fee. So these are up to what the plans I received. They submitted another landscape plan that requires another third and a third to the town. And then if there's any conditions of approval on those revised plans, that's why I usually like to wait. Once we get past TRC, they don't really need to submit another plan to me until after you guys approve it, and then we can just look at it one more time and not run the fees up. But this is in the code, it's always been there, and they're there for informational at this point. This, this applicant, I believe, has paid all of the fees.
You're okay with these fees, Mr. Bignell?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And as, as we go forward, we ask for...
All right, the fees in Mr. Bignell's report, you're, you agree with them?
I think so, we close these, we're submitting.
Yes.
No, that's not my question. You don't have any questions about them? You accept them?
Yes, I'm not only accepting...
You paid them, right. Again, I'm just watching Vashelia's one here.
Okay, right. Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Peasy?
Yeah, Mr. Bignell, on your, your report, 7F on the total trees, tonight's testimony just made a slight little revision to the, the total amount provided is going to be now instead of 591, 476. And instead of 75 shade trees, it's going to be 74, which results in the adjustment of from 225 to 222.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the revised plan, and I know they, they're testifying now for the first time that they exceed the 10% wooded, so that takes a whole bunch of trees off their list, which will probably be subtracted from mine. But if you're going to ask me if these numbers are correct, I can't tell you that right now. So you have to make that a condition of approval, and I'll certainly review it as, as a condition of approval.
Yeah, we will agree with Mr. Bignell in the way we're...
Okay, that's fine.
...with the woodlands management, and we talk about numbers.
Okay, so I think then, should I open to the public at this point? So if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak as to this application, please come forward, your name and address for the court reporter.
Having seen no one come forward, I'd like to make a motion, we close public portion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion for a preliminary and final review of this application, including the requested variance for sign position, reducing it from 15 to 10 feet, with the following conditions. First of all, the acceptance and adherence of all the recommendations made by our planning consultants, as outlined in DNR's memo dated December 13th, 2019, and Mr. Bignell's memo dated December 5th, 2019. Also, the proviso, which I believe the applicant has agreed to already, the gas company will be informed and present when digging near the high-pressure mains that are in the street now. Additionally, all dumpsters that will, that the possible tenants may be utilizing will be placed adjacent to the dock doors and be fully screened. without returning to board to seek our approval of any such changes.
Just, just to add, and Mr. Bignell will review the Woodlands management plan to make sure all those numbers are correct. Okay?
I believe it stated that on the revised...
And that they're planted too.
Woodland, Woodland management plan.
And that they're planted too, okay? But he checks them.
Madam Chair?
Okay, yes.
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Lily?
Mr. Jerry?
Yes, to approve?
Yes.
Is it correct?
Yes. Yes, in the motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Peasey?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Yes, to approve.
The application is approved.
I am going to look at the court reporter. Are you okay? Okay, so we're good to go to the next one. So now we're at number two, P. 27-2019, Federal Business 1099 through 1105, King George's Post Road, Post 390.A. And now we're on to lot 1.03.
But you know something?
And again, this is for lot 1.03.
Once again, Stephen Tripp from Willens, Coleman &amp; Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant. This, this application, as I said earlier, is the adjacent lot. It was the second lot that was created by the subdivision earlier this year. It's about 6.9 acres. It's a much smaller lot. It's also within the redevelopment area and governed by the redevelopment plan. Much smaller scale, it's a 66,000 square foot building with predominantly warehouse and some ancillary offices. There is one deviation in addition. We're, are seeking deviation with regard to the sign setback that we requested in the other application. And there's one other. There's a 40-foot side yard setback required by the redevelopment plan. We're proposing 26 feet on one side, on the east side. And the reason, and we'll have a testimony from the engineer and a planner, is that the site does have an irregular shape. It also has environmental constraints and steep slopes on the west side that preclude the, basically preclude shifting the building in that direction. So we are, as it is, and you'll hear testimony, we're well under the lot coverage, we're well under building coverage. And the only way that you could provide the 40-foot would be to reduce the building further. And we're already less than half of what's permitted by ordinance. So based on those factors, we're asking for a deviation for 26 feet. You'll also hear testimony that the building on the property next door is approximately 330 feet away and is separated by both a detention basin and a trailer parking area. So it's not, although we're 26 feet from the property line, we're not near any building. So what I'd like to do is have Mr. Espasa sworn in and provide engineering testimony.
Do you saw me swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Robert Espasa, E.S.P.A.S.A.
Mr. Espasa, can you give us a little bit of your professional background and qualifications?
Sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and New York. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2001. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I've testified before numerous boards, including this board before.
We'll accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
And you were the site engineer for this project?
I am.
And you have an aerial exhibit as well?
I do. I have an aerial exhibit of the site area.
Why don't you mark that as A1? And can you just briefly describe the property that we're talking about?
Sure. Hopefully you can all see the, the red outline in the center of the, the drawing here. So it's located at 1099-1105, King George Post Road, identified as Lot 1.03 and Block 390.A. It's a 6.9 acre undeveloped lot located in the Woodbridge Avenue Redevelopment District within Raritan Center Industrial Park. As mentioned, there are some site constraints, environmental site constraints on the western portion of the site, which include a ditch, wetlands, wetlands buffers, and riparian zone, and steep slopes. However, we do have an NJDEP approval, NJDEP permit approvals for developing this site. Just to orient you, to the north is Route 440 and Woodbridge Avenue. To the east is an industrial warehouse. To the south is King George Post Road. And to the west is the Lot 1.02 that was part of the previous application.
And the property itself is sort of in odd shape, correct? It's got an area and like a little bit of a leg that stretches out towards the adjacent property, correct?
That's correct. There's about 750 feet of frontage, but then as you, as you come north, it kicks into the west about 250 feet. So on the eastern side of the property, it makes an L.
And you have a rendered site plan to show us what we're doing?
I do.
And we'll mark that as Exhibit A2. And can you describe the site development that's proposed?
Sure. So we're seeking to approve for preliminary, final, major site plan approval to construct a 66,015 square foot warehouse and office building. 59,413 square feet will be warehouse, and 6,602 square feet would be office. It's a one-story building and 38.6 feet in height. As mentioned, we did scale down the structure to accommodate the site constraints, so we are well below the impervious coverage and the lot coverage requirements. Permitted building coverage is 50%. We're at 21.97%. Permitted impervious coverage is 80%, and we're at 42.3%.
And can you address the side yard setback that I referenced?
Sure. So along the northeast property line, where the property juts in at 250 feet to the west, we have 26 feet to the property line where 40 feet is required. However, as mentioned, hopefully you can see, there is an existing evergreen buffer at the property line, which will remain for screening. Past that is a, an existing detention basin, which is fairly large. Then past that, to the east, is trailer storage and a driveway. And then finally is the warehouse building. So we are 300, over 320 feet away, building to building.
And because of the environmental constraints and the shape of the property, the building can't really be shifted towards the west, can it?
It cannot. We already have a retaining wall at the steep slopes to, to build the loading dock area at the west.
In terms of parking, just review briefly what we're proposing.
Sure. So we have two driveway access points off of King George Post Road. They will separate truck and vehicle tra, truck and car parking traffic for safety. The driveway to the east is for the cars to the parking lot. It's 24 feet in width and provides access to a parking lot of 69 parking spaces where 43 are proposed, are required. The spaces will be nine feet by 18 as per ordinance with three ADA accessible spaces. The driveway to the west is 30 feet in width and for trucks to access 13 loading docks and six trailer storage parking spaces.
In terms of utilities?
Sure. Utilities will be made to the available utilities in King George Post Road. This includes water, gas, electric, telephone, and sanitary sewer.
Now, actually, that line we talked about previously, the Elizabeth Town Line, we're not this site, the way that line is, this particular building site is not within 75 feet, correct?
That's correct. We got a letter from Elizabeth Town Gas, and we are more than 75 feet away from both lines.
But we are tying into those lines for utility service?
That's correct.
And that will require coordination with the utility company, correct?
Correct.
So they'll be notified and they will have somebody on site when we tie into the line?
Yes.
In terms of lighting, just briefly, what are we proposing? Combination of building and pole-mounted lights?
Yeah, so we are proposing nine pole-mounted lights for the parking and loading dock areas and nine building-mounted lights on both long ends of the building, east and west. All fixtures will be LED fixtures mounted at 25 feet in height and meet the ordinance requirement for lighting.
And with the Woodlands management and landscaping, you heard the testimony, you were in the audience when we went over the prior application, correct?
Correct.
And can you address the tree replacement requirements for this property?
Yes, so this site is 71% wooded. For the tree replacement calculations, 395 replacement trees are required. We are proposing 222 tree credit obligations on the site. As mentioned, it's, it's a little hard to fit all the required trees, so we are short 173 trees, which will be planted at the property to the west, which is Lot 1.02 that was part of the previous application.
And the intent was to put the trees in close proximity to this property rather than just make a contribution, correct?
That's correct.
You thought it would enhance the overall...
It would enhance the, the area.
...aesthetics of both lots together?
Correct.
Thank you. In terms of stormwater management?
Yes, stormwater management, the site will increase impervious surfaces by 2.93 acres and is therefore considered a major development and subject to the state stormwater regulations. We are proposing two underground detention systems. One will treat runoff from the roof. One will treat runoff from the, what's considered dirty areas, which is loading and parking areas. Downstream of that detention basin will be a water quality unit, which will treat the runoff to the state standards.
And signage? No facade signs are proposed, but if they are ever provided to a specific tenant, we would comply, correct?
Correct.
And as to the monument signs? We're proposing two monument signs?
We are proposing two monument signs, one in each driveway. They will be 42 square feet in area where 75 square feet is allowed by ordinance.
And are we seeking the same relief as in the prior application to put the signs 10 feet from the right-of-way line instead of 15?
We are.
And can you tell us why?
For better visibility and for safety, so cars and trucks can, can see the signs a little quicker. We also want to get them a little closer to the curb line. The, the right-of-way line is not right at the curb. It's, it's set in, so if we can get a little closer to the, to the right-of-way line, we get a little closer to the curb.
I don't have any other questions.
Nope, doesn't look like anyone else has questions.
Any other witnesses?
We will have a planner, but I think we can indicate that we've reviewed the reports. And again, we don't have any, any issues with the, the comments in the reports. Other than the testimony to address some of Mr. Bignell's questions, which pertain to the signage and lighting, there were some questions. The only other thing we probably should mention is the refuse. We're going to handle it in the same way as indicated in the prior application, which is we're going to have either a dumpster or a compactor, as the case may be, located adjacent to the dock doors. Is that correct?
Correct, and will be enclosed.
So we'll, we'll address that issue.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Pipola.
Also, I assume the condition of notifying the gas company when you're digging close to the same main is in that road there on that adjacent line? Well, actually, we're more than 75 feet because the, the way the line comes down, it doesn't go in front of this lot. However, we are going to be working within that area because we're connecting to the main. But whenever you make a connection, you have to have the gas company out there. Yes. Yeah, they, they will make the connection for us. But none of our site work is going to be within 75 feet based on the location of the line. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
Yeah, one thing, I forgot to bring up, the, the applicant, I think, agreed to TRC. There'll be no storage of vehicles on the site that don't belong in association with the office or the warehouse space. And I just want them to reaffirm that.
And we, we agree that that was in your report.
Okay.
So that can be a specific condition of this application and the prior application.
Thank you.
There will be no leasing of any space. The only storage on the property of vehicles, trailers, will be in conjunction with the uses in the building on the site.
Right. Did you want to call your planner?
Yeah, I just want to have some brief planning testimony for the record on the side yard variance.
Do you saw me swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Please state your name and spell it for the record. This is Mike.
It will be returned.
David Cochran. I'm the architect engineer for Federal Business Centers, and I have a master's degree and a bachelor of arts, a bachelor of science degrees, degree from Rutgers in civil engineering. And I'm a licensed architect and engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and I've testified before this board several times.
And you are a licensed professional planner as well, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you have provided planning testimony before this board?
Yes, I have.
And we will accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just briefly, you heard the testimony on the side yard setback deviation from the ordinance, correct?
Yes, I have.
And we're providing 26 feet where 40 feet is required?
That's correct.
And the redevelopment plan permits C. variances? So that can be a specific condition of this application and the prior application.
Thank you.
There will be no leasing of any space. The only storage on the property of vehicles, trailers, will be in conjunction with the uses in the building on the site.
Right, did you want to call your planner?
Yeah, I just want to have some brief planning testimony for the record on the side yard variance.
Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell to the record.
This is my.
I'm the architect engineer for Federal Business Centers, and I have a master's degree and a bachelor of arts, a bachelor of science degrees, degree from Rutgers in civil engineering, and I'm a licensed architect and engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and I've testified before this board several times.
And you are a licensed professional planner as well, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you have provided planning testimony before this board?
Yes, I have.
And we will accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just briefly, you heard the testimony on the side yard setback deviation from the ordinance, correct?
Yes, I have.
And we're providing 26 feet where 40 feet is required?
That's correct.
And the redevelopment plan permits C variances, permits deviations if the applicant can show a C variance?
Yes, it permits the C1 and the C2 variances.
And in terms of the, the C1 is the hardship variance, and the C2 is the flexible C variance, is that correct?
That's correct.
You're familiar with those?
Yes, I am.
And in terms of the C1, it's undue hardship due to unique and exceptional characteristics, and C2 is where the purposes are advanced, purposes of the MLUL are advanced, and the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments, correct?
That's correct.
So here, specifically with the setback, did you take a look at the reasons why the applicant is seeking the variance?
Yes, the, the lot is really impacted by the steep slope, by the wetlands and by the riparian buffer. If you look at the drawing, the exhibit, you can see it's very unusual in that you see a lot of green and a very relatively small building on the site for that, and that's unusual in today. And that's because of the unique situation, topographic situation out there.
And it's also exacerbated by the, the L shape of the property as well, correct?
That's correct.
And in terms of what we're proposing, is it correct to say that we're well under what's permitted by the ordinance?
Absolutely.
And if the relief were not granted, we would not be able to shift the building, correct?
That's correct.
The building would have to be reduced further?
That's right.
And so, in your opinion, are we advancing any purposes in the municipal land use law?
Yes, we are.
And what would those be?
Well, we're going to be advancing the economic development of the area, the, also the development of an existing industrial park and the beautification of the area.
And that advances purposes of the land use law and the redevelopment plan, correct?
That's correct.
And specifically, purposes A, G, and I of the municipal land use law?
That's correct.
Now, do you see any, any detriments whatsoever to the side yard setback that's proposed?
Absolutely not.
And can you tell us why?
Well, because to the west, we have the, again, the wetlands and the riparian buffer area and the steep slope. To the east, we already have an existing industrial building with a catch basin, a large catch ba, a large detention basin, and a parking area for trucks. To the north, we have an interstate highway, and to the south, the industrial park. There are no residences in the area.
So you believe that this can, variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and zoning plan?
Absolutely.
And that's for the reasons that you just stated?
Yes, it is.
I don't have anything further.
Okay. I think then, at this point, I'd open to the public. If anyone would like to speak as to this application, please come forward, name and address.
Having seen no one come forward, make a motion that we close public portion?
Do you have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant preliminary and final approval of this application, including the requested variances for the side setback of 26 feet and also the freestanding sides to be allowed a 10-foot setback rather than a required 15.
Mr. Pippala, I think, just for the record, you probably should also include allowing the applicant to satisfy the tree requirements by planting on the adjacent property. That should probably be specifically in the resolution.
173 trees.
I have that listed in, under conditions, that's not a variance necessarily.
Okay.
With the additional following conditions. One, also, I would add that the, the fire department is requesting a SU-47 turning radius to be shown on drawings, which is not included as a condition. Second of all, as agreed by the applicant, the dumpsters used by tenants would be shielded from public view as a tenant requires, open dumpsters. Thirdly, that the, there will be the 173 tree shortage will be made up on the adjacent lot as defined by Mr. Bignell. Second, and finally, that there will be no vehicle storage beyond the needs of the tenant on the property site.
Madam Chair?
Finally, including adherence and acceptance on all the recommendations and comments which our consultants have provided, which I believe the applicant has agreed to in Mr. Bignell's memo dated December 5th and Mr. Carley's memo dated December 13th.
Do I have a second?
And your statement.
Sorry, and finally adding, the proviso, proviso that no changes can be made to these conditions of approval without returning to this board to seek our approval of any such requests.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, Lilian?
Ms. Jerry?
Yes, to approve?
Mr. Pippala?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelci?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Saltes? Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Yes.
This application is approved.
Now, next on our agenda is presentation. Do you want to take a five-minute break? Okay, I think at this point then, five-minute break. Meeting, please come to order. We have before us now Mr. Bignell and his associate, Todd Belcher.
Bledcher.
Bledcher. We're on to page two on our agenda, presentation by Bignell Consulting, 1,000 U.S. Route 1, and...
Okay, go for it.
I'm going to swear you in, both of you, simultaneously. Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and make sure that you put your credentials on the record, because no one knows who you are.
My name is Henry Bignell, and I'm the principal at Bignell Planning Consultants. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University about 100 years ago. My license number is 2374. I've appeared on the board's consultant planner for our company for the last 30 years, I guess. I've been here for at least the last 15 or so. I've appeared at Superior Court on many occasions to give testimony on planning matters, as recently as today on affordable housing. Today, we're going to do a couple of redevelopment studies, and, but before we begin, let Todd put his, his information on the record.
Sure. Nice to be with you again. Todd Bledcher, licensed professional planner, state of New Jersey, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and again, been recognized by this board and numerous other boards as an expert in planning, as well as Superior Court.
And we will accept you both as experts in your field.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Tonight, we're going to give you two plans. One is going to be for a need of rehabilitation, not development, for a need of rehabilitation, and the other one will be a redevelopment plan for a property that we've already voted on a need of rehabilitation. Okay? So the first one's going to be on 1,000 U.S. Route 1, and that's the BJ's property. And with that, I'm going to ask Todd, you know, he did a lot of the work on these, on these reviews, on these reports, I'm going to ask him to make the presentation before the board on this one.
Okay, so we can get started. Once again, good to be with you. We'll start out with the 1,000 U.S. Route 1 study area. This is a need of rehabilitation study. What I like to do is, very briefly, just give you a refresher, just one slide on the rehabilitation process. A number of the previous studies that we've done in the past couple of months have been redevelopment studies, so I just wanted to give you just a refresher. The process starts with the council delineating the study area and directing the planning board to study the area. In the rehabilitation process, the council adopts a resolution delineating the study area and coming up with the basis for that delineation, and then forwards that to the planning board for its recommendations. The planning board studies it, makes a recommendation, and that is sent back to the council, which adopts that resolution in creating a rehabilitation area. Following that, the process you're familiar with, a draft plan is prepared, the plan is forwarded to the planning board, and then it's sent back to the council with your comments and recommendations for final adoption. That resolution that was sent to the planning board was Resolution R. 697-122019. This fall, within the last two months or so, was adopted by the council designating this area as an area, I'm sorry, referring the study area to the planning board. This study, of course, like many others, includes our document research, field investigation on the property. This analysis that's reported is in a written report. You have it in your packets. It was dated December 6th and revised through December 11th, consists of 15 pages. The report's been on file in the planning department at least since December 6th of this year, and the findings of the report are offered as the justification for the rehabilitation designation. My testimony tonight just summarizes that report. I can show you what the site looks like. It's a 2019 image. There are six parcels in the study area. It's a total of 19 acres. It's located on the south side of Route 1, that's the northbound side, generally opposite the Clayton Block facility that's being demolished as we speak, and also directly across from the Topgolf facility. Both of those are also redevelopment projects that this board reviewed and recommended. So the main parcel is Lot 49. It contains a shopping center, it's commonly known as Edison Woods Plaza. The main anchor on the left side of the image, the west side of the site, is a BJ's Wholesale Club. It's a big box, retail business. There's various other retail, entertainment, and medical office tenants in the property, both in the building on the, the left side of the image, the west side of the site, and on the right side of the image, that's the east side of the site, all located on Lot 49. There's also another parcel that's owned by the same property owner, the, the shopping center owner, and that's in the upper, let's call it the upper left-hand portion of the, the image. It's a red triangular sliver, it's labeled as Lot 29. That is under same ownership as Lot 49. Lot 29 includes a paved area that's used as a parking lot for the BJ's Wholesale Club. It contains a pylon sign that identifies the shopping center, and it contains a portion of what's called Yalensik's Court. There are four other parcels that are part of the study area. They are located between Lots 29 and 49. These are Lots 39, 40, 41, and 43A. They make up a linear tract of land that's owned by PSE&amp;G, that contains the overhead power lines and the overhead towers that hold up those utility lines. The area underneath the power lines is paved and occupied by the shopping center as a paved parking lot. There are very few parcels where, PSE&amp;G parcels where the area underneath is developed along that Route 1 corridor. Most of them are not occupied or developed besides for the wires and towers, this is one of them. Going on to the site, this is what the site looks like. I'm sure many of you have at least driven past it 100 times. Large paved parking area, large big box, a warehouse club on the south side of the site. You can see on the left side of the image, the overhead wires and overhead towers. This image is taken on the west side of the site near Yalensik's Court. Can move on to, oops, see if we can get all this back. So we can move on to the east side of the site. This is the Chuck E. Cheese Arcade, various other retail businesses in here, medical office, tile shop, and a few restaurants in this shopping center building. This is from the east side of the site looking west, and you can see the BJ's Warehouse Building, paved parking area, and again, you can see that the part of the site underneath the power lines is paved and occupied as a paved parking lot. I wanted to take you back to the overhead aerial image just to point out to you that the site is bifurcated by what's called Forest Haven Boulevard. Forest Haven Boulevard is here, and it is not a municipal right-of-way. It's not a dedicated street. It exists on the site, it's shown as Forest Haven Boulevard, it's labeled, all the signage is there, but it is essentially an easement area that exists on the site. It goes from Route 1 easement area over the PSE&amp;G property on 43A and on to Lot 49. For shopping center users who want to access the shopping center site, they need to use the easement area over the PSE&amp;G property to get from the shopping center to Route 1, and then if you look on the bottom part of the image, you see there's a large multifamily residential development on the south side of the site. Those residents would also need to traverse over the PSE&amp;G property, over the shopping center property, to get to that lot on the south side of the site. That's all occurs over Forest Haven Boulevard, which is, again, not a municipal right-of-way. It's just essentially, it's an easement area, cross-access area on Lot 49. Because of the location of that access point, the development on the site is always going to be complicated by the layout of the lots and how they are separated from Route 1 by the PSE&amp;G right-of-way. Now, we were not directed to study the parcel as if it were an obsolete layout, the way we would study a redevelopment criteria, but that access issue would need to be addressed through what the statute calls a program of rehabilitation. And what that really means is that we can build into a future redevelopment plan some sort of fix to try to make that situation better. We're not going to completely repair it, we're not going to solve all the problems that are out there, but we can try to make that a better situation. So the layout is one issue. The other issue is the issue of the sewer and water utilities. There are, just like the redevelopment process, there are six criteria that can be used to find an area in need of rehabilitation. The statute lists them, they're in the report, and in this case, criteria six is satisfied. That's the criteria. By the way, we only need to establish one of those criteria, that's all you need, and the lot can also, or the tract can be studied as a whole. Each lot does not need to qualify on its own. So the report, the report finds that criteria six is satisfied, the majority of water and sewer infrastructure in the site is at least 50 years old and in need of substantial repair and maintenance, that's rather straightforward. We don't rely on just our net opinion for that. We reached out to the township engineer who prepared a memorandum, it's in the report, and the memorandum provides, from an engineering perspective, township engineering perspective, engineer's analysis that the sewer and water system, based on his records, would meet that criteria. So, the end of the report makes a recommendation, and that is that both the council and the planning board can, in a very straightforward way, clearly the site meets the criteria, and you can recommend in the affirmative that it qualifies as an area in need of rehabilitation. So that's the end of my testimony. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about it, but I think this is one that is rather straightforward. Mr. Rubin, I, I know your attorney had prepared...
Yeah, but we first need to entertain a motion to recommend to the governing body that they declare this property an area in need of rehabilitation.
I would do that in the form, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to do that in the form of a motion to redesignate this as a area of rehabilitation.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Okay, Lillian?
Mr. Jerry?
Yes.
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky?
Abstained, devoted council.
Mr. Saltes? Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Yes.
We're to go back and...
And I have a memorializing resolution that I've prepared.
And I did just want to make a positive comment. The PowerPoint really, I think, helps me to visualize what we're talking about and the criteria, so it made, I think, it a lot easier for me to understand what is needed from us. Great work.
Thank you.
Everyone have them?
Yep. Okay. When did this statute, when was this passed? Like, what year?
The rehabilitation?
Yeah. The local redevelopment and housing law?
What's that?
The local redevelopment and housing law? Like, in the 60s, 70s, 80s?
1992.
What's that?
The recent version was 1992. The local redevelopment laws passed in the 90s. It essentially replaced an old law that had been on the books since the 60s.
The Blighted Areas Act.
Blighted Areas.
Okay, we don't call it blighted area anymore, from the constitution, state constitution.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as presented and forward it back to council.
Second the motion.
Okay, Lillian?
Mr. Jerry?
Yes.
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky?
Abstained, devoted council.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Yes.
This resolution is approved, to go to council.
Madam Chair, through you. Mr. Danielle, if you have a copy of the Cox book?
Yeah.
If you look at the end of that book, there's the land use laws they print. Right after the end, the land use law is the housing law.
Of course, yeah.
So you can read the whole thing, and it was amended and such. Our next, our next application is the redevelopment plan for the Patrick Rehabilitation in Need of, we had done that in Need of way back a few, I guess, about a month ago, and, so now we're back with the plan. And Mr. Todd will go through that as relatively, as quick as he can.
We can do this briefly. So, I do have a copy of the Patrick, uh, Patrick Avenue Redevelopment Plan. It should be in your packet. It looks like this. There's no particular slides for this one, we just work out of the text of the plan, so. This is, it's the Patrick Avenue Rehabilitation Area, but we've prepared the Patrick Avenue Redevelopment Plan that puts into place the goals of the rehab area. I believe it was in October of this year, this board recommended to the council that this area be an area in need of rehabilitation. Subsequent to that, we prepared a draft plan. You have that in your packet. It's 25 pages, dated December 9th, 2019, and again, this has been on file in the planning department at least since December 6th. I'm sorry, December 9th. This supersedes the existing zoning that's in place on the site. That's the LI Light Industrial Zone, supersedes zoning for a designated redeveloper. Page 18 of the redevelopment plan, is everyone able to follow it home here?
I think we had a question?
Well, Madam Chair, this is the property of the old Howard Holiday Inn on the other side of the highway, so you know exactly it's, there's a map in the report, so you know which one we're talking about.
So you can go to the map on page 18?
Yeah. Akbar. Akbar's that piece of property in the qualifiers, yeah. Old Holiday Inn.
Everybody ready to proceed? Everybody know where we are?
Yes.
Okay. So if you open to page 18, you can see exactly where the study area is, or the rehabilitation area is. I'm sorry, the map's on page 12 of the report. If you recall, this property from two months ago, almost a vacant lot, located essentially behind the Akbar Restaurant, between Route 287 and Warehouse Property, behind the Worldwide Wholesale Carpet Warehouse. Page 18 provides the permitted uses, and if you've had a chance to read through it, they're all sort of the same sort of gist. The permitted uses would be assisted living facilities, memory care facilities, skilled nursing residential facilities, and age-restricted residential facilities for, and including independent living. The parking standards of the redevelopment plan are slightly modified, because age-restricted and assisted living and memory care facilities require much less parking than your RSIS. We use the ITE standard, it's .4 spaces per dwelling unit, and that is essentially for the staff and employees. The residents of these types of facilities usually do not generate much parking at all. The landscaping, lighting, loading, trash, signs, and buffering section of the redevelopment plan are essentially the same as your existing ordinance. There's really no substantial changes there. The plan also includes additional sections for architectural requirements, redevelopers' agreements, and requires compliance with the town's affordable housing ordinance. There's no waiver of that. They still have to comply with our affordable housing regulations. There's a section in here that indicates how it complies with our master plan on page 23, which essentially says that economic development on the Route 1 corridor is something the township wants, and the desire to rezone industrial properties along Route 1 from industrial uses to something that might be more compatible with the Route 1 economic engine is something that the Edison Master Plan wants the town and developers and the planning board to consider. So that's essentially where we are. Those are the permitted uses. Parking standards are slightly modified, but the other elements of your ordinance, landscaping and lighting and trees, signs, buffering, are all essentially the same. Certainly be glad to answer any questions you might have about it.
Todd, did you also use Criteria 6 for this, or?
Uh, this one, I believe, was also a criteria, based on the sewers, yeah.
Three and six.
Three and six.
You used three because of the layout. Yeah, but you did use six, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Peasy, did you have a question?
I just want to make a comment on both these, the rehabilitation and the redevelopment plans, that what an outstanding job Bignell's done on this. It was very easy to read, to follow, and it just, everything about it made sense, and I think you should be recognized for the good job that you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Bignell's recommendation for the Patrick Avenue Redevelopment Pan, Plan, and forward it to the council for their consideration.
Second the motion.
Okay, Lillian?
Mr. Jerry?
Yes.
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky?
Abstained, devoted council.
Mr. Saltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Yes.
Approved to go to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a resolution for this one, too. Okay.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second the motion.
Okay, Lillian?
Second, who seconded? Sal?
Yes.
Mr. Jerry?
Yes.
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky?
Abstained.
Mr. Saltes?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Yes.
This resolution is approved.
Okay, at this point, there's no one from the public, so we don't have to open to the public, and I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, and I'll see everyone next year. Any other comments before we adjourn? Oh, do we need to do a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.